Um, the like building for the application process.
So it's one member of.
Well, that's how it's written. It would be, yeah, it would be whoever's authorized to. You know, be the agent in charge of those decision-making processes for that decision-making process. There are cases where uh it's already triggered by the Wetlands Protection Act or the Wetlands Bylaw. Which is reviewed by the COMCOM. Uh, so, you know. It's satisfied through that process. So another reason why it makes sense for it to kind of be under the same umbrella.
Now, does that get tied in at all with hazard mitigation?
It's. This, the, the stormwater bylaw is like the driving force behind it is actually our MS four permitting or NITPs. Uh, which has to do with our outfall pipes that go to the ocean. So making sure that you're not, you know, dumping contaminated water. Into the ocean. But. You know, it, it does all of that stuff, climate change, hazard mitigation, MVP, it all kind of left. Wetlands by law, it all kind of layers together. Um, in our effort to prepare for those types of events. So. You know, a simple way to put it is if you are going to. Eliminate. X amount of square feet of stormwater discharging into naturally back into the ground because you're building something. You have to identify how you're going to account for that. So you're not just passing it on to the next person downhill.
Alright, so it's six thirty-one. So uh. The joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health is now in session for March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Welcome. Carlos Selectman, Tony. Looks like Deb's not able to join. I'll read, I'll quickly read these COVID stats. Total COVID cases for March was six. Testing data of the last two weeks, there were two hundred and thirty-two tests administered and six positives. The Johnson School has no cases. Total case count for Nahat cumulative. Uh, is five hundred and eighty-five. Total PCR tests. Were twenty-one thousand and eighty-two. Making the hot positivity rate three point four five percent. Vaccine data remains the same. Uh, the eighteen hundred and thirty-five residents. Uh, boosted, that's fifty-seven percent. Um, the town still has quite a few rapid at-home COVID test kits if residents need one. They're available to pick up at Town Hall in the library during regular business hours. I don't know, John or Tony, if there's. Would like to add anything to that?
John's, John let me know he's running a little bit lately. Uh, but. He said, you know, the data, as you just read, uh, is manageable. Um, it's good that there's zero cases at the school. There's. Uh, additional new variants that we're following closely. Uh, we'll keep you informed as we get more information about them and. They announce that stuff to the public. And uh, we're working on another, uh, planning for another distribution, COVID test distribution event. Is in the works. So stay tuned and. We will supersize that as it gets finalized.
Right, let me get back to my. Word files. Opening comments. Uh, winter parking ban is in effect until March twentieth, twenty twenty-two. It's another few days. All vehicles must be parked off of the street from midnight until six AM. Twenty twenty-two. Resident parking stickers are now available for purchase at nahat.org. Parking stickers are ten dollars each. All outstanding bills must be paid to the town and the census form must be completed before purchasing. And. One question that comes up is can we go to Town Hall and buy a sticker? What's the answer to that, Tony?
No. Everything's done online. So through City Hall systems, if you go to nahat.org. There's a, a picture of the sticker right there on the homepage. Click on that. Um, if you, honestly, if you need help and you come to the Town Hall, we can put you on a computer and walk you through it. Uh, but we actually don't have the stickers in-house. All the collection, the payment, everything, they send it directly to you. Everything's done through that system. So.
Thanks for uh clarifying that, because I know that question comes up all the time.
That would have saved me a lot of headaches about twenty years ago.
Compost area will open for the season Saturday, April twentieth, uh, excuse me, April second, twenty twenty-two, coming right up. Hours are Wednesday and Saturday, nine AM to three PM. Twenty twenty-two resident sticker required. Visit the Public Works Department at nahat.org for accepted materials. No tree or tree limbs larger than eight inches in diameter will be accepted. No tree stumps of any size excepted leaves and other yard waste in biodegradable bags only. Recycling for metal and white goods, TVs, computers, et cetera begins. April thirtieth. Recycling dates are the last Saturday of each month. From eight AM to twelve PM behind the DPW garage on Flash Road. Twenty twenty-two resident stickers are required. Visit Public Works Department at nahat.org for accepted material. Certain fees may apply. The Charles Kelly Scholarship is accepting essays through April fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Visit the scholarship page at nahat.org for a full description of essay instructions. Uh, mail or drop off completed essay and application to Kristen Taylor at Town Hall. Again, uh, we only had a few applications last year, so all you high school seniors. Get your essay in. It's a pretty simple assignment and it's anonymous until the uh, the winner is selected. Um, annual town election informations. The election is Saturday, April thirtieth. March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two by five PM is the last day to object or withdraw. Uh, that must be submitted to the town clerk. April eighth. Twenty twenty-two by eight PM, the last day to register for vote for town elections. So. Don't forget to get registers when all money sad faces on April thirtieth. April twenty twenty-two. April twenty-second, twenty twenty-two by five PM campaign finance report due to the town clerk. May thirty-first by twenty twenty-two by five PM, the thirty-day campaign finance report is due to the town clerk. You can visit the election chief page at nahat.org for more information. Other opening comments. Uh, Gene, do you have any, any comments you want to make?
I don't.
How about you, Mark?
I'm also, I'm Mr. Chairman.
I do. Um, and. Uh, I'm, I'm wondering if we should write a letter from the Board of Selectmen um, about this and um. Tony, I know a few weeks ago I sent you a photograph of a. One of the telephone poles at near the intersection of Hot Road and Tigo Way. It's one of these new poles spliced to the old pole and the old poles propped up on. Some wooden blocks and um. At a minimum, it looks terrible and. At a maximum, it looks kind of unsafe. There's another one on Spring Road right near Nahat Road. The one, just as you come into town, there's another doubled-up pole. Just a little bit down from the bank. Um, anyway, they really look lousy. And um, I'd like to put some pressure on National Grid to. Uh, get them up to this, at, at least the aesthetic standards of, of Nahat. So. If we think of a, a letter from Boris Leckman would help. I know, Tony, you have a contact there. Just kind of want to get these things fixed. They, they look like, you know, something somebody put together in a rush to. Solve an emergency and now they're sort of a permanent fixture.
Like the one on the hot road by the bank, um, you know, I know National Grid has done their part. Um, they're waiting for. The Comcast or Verizon to come, the telephone, you know, to move their wires over to the new pole. So I could, I'll start with Verizon and uh, I mean, I'm sorry, I'll start with National Grid and um. See what I get for a response and following up with a letter is always helpful too.
Yeah, and that was a perfect segue to my, my next point, which was a.
Let me just jump in here.
Yeah, sure.
I, I think what they'll tell you, Tony, is that it starts, it's a pecking order. So whoever's highest on the, on, on the telephone pole has to go first. Um, traditionally, it used to be the hot fire department's alarm system that was on top of the pole. So they'd say, well. We can't move it until fire department removes theirs and then it could be cable, then it could be electric. So it goes down those lines. So it starts at the top and when they get down to the bottom. Then they take the other pole out. They're supposed to. And then, and then, and then, and everybody, everybody puts their finger at one another during the process.
Right, grid, grid usually um. Puts the new pole in, moves their stuff over and then Verizon or Comcast, whoever's last. Is supposed to take the old pole away when they move their stuff off. It looks like that's, it's halfway done. You know, the, the only thing left on the old pole on the hot road by the bank is the lowest wires, which I think are cable and telephone. So anyways, I, you, but usually a grid will reach out to those other utilities. You know, to kind of put pressure on them on our behalf to say get, get it done.
Yeah, anyway, I just wanna, I just wanna get it done and, and it could be that cable is the lowest on the pecking order. And uh, I just started to say that's perfect segue to my next. Um, issue was, I got a complaint from a, a resident um, today that. Um, the cable wires are. Low enough in the neighborhood that trucks, including the trash truck, keep knocking them down and um. So. Would like to get that fixed. And I've seen places where there's cable wires just sort of hanging down the pole. So um. I don't know if we. I mean, today I drove around and took a bunch of pictures of these precarious telephone poles, but. Uh, maybe we could solicit some input from residents if you see cables. Cables dangling down or cable cables that get hit by trucks, let us know and we can kind of. Collect a little master list and, and get that resolved as well.
Hey, since we're talking about electricity, uh, comment was made to me or a question from, from a. A, a resident was that the, Tony, do we not have any electricity at the wharf?
Uh, we, we are. Talking about outside, like in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we're, we're fixing those, those, both of those electrical panels. Were uh, in very corroded, rough shape, need to be replaced. So we're just waiting on the uh. The new panels to come in.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, those will be in high demand soon. People start to get their boats ready. Okay, if there's no other opening comments, uh, new business. We have um. An appointment of Laurie Valentine to the Board of Registars. Do you have a motion?
I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Laurie Valentine to the Board of Registars.
Second it.
Uh, many discussion. Um, what's the term of this appointment? Three-year terms?
I think it is.
Yeah. And then is she being like renewed or uh, being added? Okay. Alright, sounds great. Thanks for volunteering again, Laurie. Uh, any other? Any more discussion? Uh, hearing, seeing none, roll call vote.
Jean Canty, I.
Michael and I.
Josh Andrew, my. Event request, wildlife encounters at the library. Do we have a motion?
But you want, you want to go?
I, sure, um. See, I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the hard public library for wildlife encounters. Exhibit on Tuesday, April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, starting at ten thirty AM in the Manhattan Hall.
Second.
Discussion. Um, this is a regular annual event that the library has hosted in the past and they're bringing this back. It's open to kids and adults of all ages and is a free event. I was looking at the uh. Event request a few minutes ago. Sounds pretty interesting. Bring some answers in there.
Sharon's on the call. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to ask her if she'd like to make.
Sure, would you like to uh? Give your pitch, Sharon?
Sure. Um, yes, this is, uh, we're happy that once again we can meet in person. And so we've done that with our townwide read programs. They're doing really well. We just had like twenty-six children at the uh. Craft or noon event to do something for Saint Patrick's Day. And so now we're gearing, gearing up again for what we do during spring break and this will be. Uh, this organization bringing their menagerie to talk about animals and. How, what their behaviors are like and have the children able to see them up close and personal.
Sounds great.
That's great.
Um, okay, any more discussion? Uh, roll call vote.
Jean Canty, I.
Michael and I.
Josh Andrew, my. Uh, we have a vote to. Uh, seek um, recommendations from the uh, Town Land O'Land Study Committee. For the Coast Guard Housing Sale. Are we voting on this today or are we just discussing it? I think we're voting, right?
Voting to send it to the Town Own Land Study Committee for their review and to put together recommendations.
Right, so this is sort of the next step in the process, um, which began at a town meeting. Um, authorizing the board of selectmen to sell these properties. Uh, per the uh, plan that had been created by the Coast Guard Housing Study Committee. Been through the planning board and um. And now this would be, would go to, if we approve this vote, go to the Town Own Land Study Committee for their recommendations. Which would include appraisals for recommended sale price and things like that. Um, I don't know, Tony, if you had anything to add to that or Jean or Mark?
Now, is that, is that a motion?
I'll make a motion. Um, I move that um, the Board of Selectmen. Vote to uh, send the Town Own Land Study Committee, um, the Coast Guard Housing Sale. Uh, to seek their recommendations. It wasn't the most eloquent motion, but.
Second. You made it second.
Okay, alright, so uh, continued discussion?
Dan, do you want to um, explain some of the process that the planning board just went through?
Sure. Um, we went to the planning board along with Tony Capaciety from our engineering folks. And we obtained an A and R for this project, which is an approval not required. Which means it doesn't need to go through the cumbersome process of subdivision review and approval because it doesn't need it. Because it's simply put, it has enough roadway to provide frontage on Castle and Goddard. So uh, they approved it without the, with an A and R. The next step is to go to the Town Own Land Study Committee to seek their recommendations. After which we can start drafting up, assuming the, for a second, I want to go forward, we go and draft up some um. Uh, bids to, or requests for bids to start raising the properties. Um, I think we're going one or two at a time.
Yep, and so the Town Land Study Committee, which, you know, doesn't meet uh, regularly only when um, the. Uh, town meeting authorizes the sale of town property. As their role, I sit on it with um, a few other members uh, from the planning board, the assessors. A, a couple of, I forget the exact uh, makeup of the board, but basically the role is to take a look at the property. Run uh, comparisons of other property in sales and. Um, essentially make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen as to, you know, what the expected. Uh, price should be for those properties uh, based on those comps. Um, takes some time to go through and as far as Coast Guard Housing goes, uh, the current residents are in there until September. Uh, so. We, we have some time here. The Townland Study Committee is going to have some time to go through this process before sending back. You know, a report to the selection.
Right, any other?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, I don't have any problem with sending this to the, the study, the study committee at this point. Um, to let them begin their review. I will say though, um. You know, before I exercise my authority as a member of the Board of Selectmen to act upon. The voted town meeting, um, I'll certainly, I'll do a couple of things. One, I'll wait for. Wait for the town to complete its housing um, plan. Um, and we'll go from there, but um, I just want to let, like. You know, people know that. You know, I understand what the town voted on. And. Before I exercise my authority to, to vote on. Um, selling off properties, I'm going to wait until I see the uh, the results of our housing study.
When do we expect to see that?
Well, we have an article town meeting, um, to look for appropriation. And. And it should be, Tony, me, I want to talk about that. It shouldn't take too long, right?
Uh, well, I guess it's gonna, it's gonna depend on. Um, you know, what we actually get funding for. Uh, if we're talking a full housing production plan versus, you know, um, some elements of that, but. I would think we'd be able to complete the, and then how intense the public process is going to be. But I, I would, I would assume it's going to be less than six months to go through that from start to finish.
Yeah, I was listening to the uh, the CPC Committee, Tony, and you were talking with that committee about funding this project and um. Sounded like the, the full, the full housing production plan would be more expensive and. Um, we might break it down into elements. So. In light of uh, what Selectmen calling this brought up, I wonder if we can make sure that one of the elements. Addresses this aspect of it, so to speak. So that we don't have to wait, you know, let's say another year, full year and a half to have.
Oh, yeah, I mean. You built, you, you develop a housing production plan. And get it approved by the state and use it as a tool to provide yourself safe harbor against unfriendly forty B developments. I, there's nothing against using elements of that housing production plan. Um, prior to it becoming an approved state housing production plan. To accomplish, you know, housing goals and needs that also provide you safe harbor, right? So certainly would have elements of that housing production. Efforts of that, of that initiative are going to identify, you know. And look at this, at Coast Guard Housing is one of them. Where we fall short of our forty B requirements and where we have opportunities to. Uh, make up for that shortfall. This would be one of them. Um, and that's something that we could consider. And move forward on, you know, before uh, accomplishing a full housing production plan. In other words.
Some, something I've wanted to ask, is there a certain architectural design? For those houses as they're built?
No, uh, what, what we basic, what we, in order to um. To be fully in control of that, we would have to actually hire like a developer, build homes and then sell them off. Um, all, all that the Coast Guard Housing Committee recommended was. Um, to keep in line with the current characteristics of the neighborhood was a uh, forty-five percent floor area ratio. Uh, so that, you know, you're building homes that are of similar size, no larger than similar sized homes in the area.
What, what did you say? I thought it was twenty-five percent. Am I wrong?
Right now, uh, that's our current zoning is twenty-five. They increased it. The town meeting vote was forty-five percent.
I think it's the opposite way around.
Yeah, yeah.
You're, I'm sorry.
They were, they were considering forty-five percent on the floor, Tony, so that's where your memory comes from. You're sort of in the ballpark, that's.
It, right, they shrunk the size.
Right, so that you wouldn't max out, can't max out on those lots as much as you could on.
Right, so a ten thousand square foot lot is a twenty-five. Forty-five hundred square foot house.
Footprint. Uh, so um. Yeah, I, I'm wondering if um. Gene, your comment about housing style, whether that would be. Possibly within the realm of the Town Own Land Study Committee's recommendations. Anybody know whether that would?
The reason I asked the question is I was doing some filing a week ago. And I came across, and I think it was two thousand and four or two thousand and eight. And it was a complete layout. Fourteen units. In all different design, well, one separate set of designs for the single families. And then it appeared to be, I've got it here somewhere, and I'll show it to you later. Um, it, it also had um, what appeared to be forty B. And, and I'm not sure how that, that worked out, but it was just, it, it, it was so uniform. It looked great. That's why I asked if these are going to be.
Gene, I, I had developed that and um, it was based on a town reading vote. The town meeting voted to authorize twenty-eight units there. Um, and we're going, and there's going to be a mix between single-family homes. And economy and development out of Gotta Drive. Um, and that was the result of that town meeting vote. But uh, we, we put it out to bid. Uh, we accepted the bid. Um, from a developer. We began to negotiate a development agreement with that developer. And that was in two thousand eight when the real estate market fell out and the developer just said, we can't do it. Um, and that stopped that. So, but there were, there were, what you were looking at were proposals. Uh, from developers, um, that were going to come in and do the whole development.
That's just what it looked like.
Uh, but this is a little different now. This, what the, what the town had voted on, uh. That town meeting was to authorize the Board of Selected to sell twelve individual lots. Uh, that could be developed around the restrictions, um, the zoning and deed restrictions. Um, by the Coast Guard Committee. So um, that's what we're looking at now. Uh, my only concern, I'm not totally against that. It could be a mix of different things. Uh, but uh, I still think that there's an opportunity here that um. We could look at and. My opinion will be formed. A lot by what the result of the, of the housing um, study.
So that's style, so just to further explain it, um, you're, you're trading off some of your financial. Benefit of selling the property for more control. benefit of selling the property for more control of the future look of the homes. Um, so by taking the approach of having a developer come in and, and do it that way, that Mark had just explained, you know, they're going to get a piece of, you know, the revenue generated from the sale of the property.
Let me just add, Tony, that original two thousand and eight plan that was approved by town meeting was based, was formed around a friendly fortyB that the town would work where they develop up under the fortyB process, but we would, we'd approve, I believe it was twenty-five percent of the developments would be affordable.
Yeah.
I think it, it, it resulted in two of the single family homes and maybe a half dozen of the condominiums.
Yeah, and then, but in that, in that, in that format, you have a little bit more control over what the color of the homes are, the siding, you know, right? Versus just selling individual lots.
It just had a certain uniformity to it that caught my attention, so I thought I'd ask the question.
We, under that scenario, the town is working very closely with the developer.
So what you're doing tonight is, you know, you're, by sending a town own land study committee, you're not committing one way or the other on any of it. You're allowing them to kind of take a look and provide recommendations based on comps of what open lots are being sold for. Meanwhile, we'll be working on the housing production plan, so to speak. And so, you know, the last stop before we do anything, it comes to the board of selectmen. So you're going to have, you know, the next time Coast Guard housing, you know, items kind of come before you, you're going to have two new pieces of, you know, huge information to make.
Yeah, I think, so Tony, I'm, I'm comfortable in that you sit on that committee. But I do think it's important that we set the parameters of what, or the scope of what that committee is actually looking at. Because it could be anything. And I think we need to be careful about just opening this whole thing up again. Uh, if they're looking just at comps and what, what the, what the, the value of the lots are, that's fine. They're going beyond that, those parameters. I think we need to be careful about what the, what that is.
Absolutely.
So, um, with all, with all that in mind, we can either vote today and you can vote yes or no, or we could potentially defer this vote to let it next meeting and take a stab at defining that scope, as you just described, Mark. I am.
Mr. Chair, I think I can add something here that might be helpful.
Yeah.
This is a committee that was created by our O-two annual town meeting. So that, that vote really defined their, their charter, so to speak.
Their mission.
Yeah, their mission. And then I believe it's renewed every year if I'm correct. So that's really where their job, that's where their duty comes in. Now, if their mission was amended somewhere along the line since O-two, that might be worth digging into. But having dealt with them in the past, they simply, as Tony mentioned, got an appraisal and then made a recommendation as to whether it should or should not be sold. I think the last time we dealt with them was over in Seaview, uh, right, Bayview, one of the two. So, Bayview. And all they did was, like you said, got a recommendation and made it, made it, made a vote. There wasn't no sort of, well, that was a very small piece of property, so different, different context, but that's all they did.
Yeah, Dan, we're not asking the, the study committee to make a recommendation of whether we should do what town meeting has already authorized us to do. Town meeting has already done that.
Right.
So I think that the parameters set by the land study committee, you're right, Dan. It was set up in, what, two thousand and two, I think. And there was a, there was, there's a sort of, a series of questions that they go through. I don't know if those have changed when they're looking at a piece of property and making their recommendation to the town. But, um, I mean, we're not asking them to come back to us and say, well, you don't think, we don't think you should sell these properties. Town meeting already voted on that.
Well, town voted, meeting gave you the authorization to do it, and the, this committee would basically be saying, well, we recommend you exercise that authorization or, you know, defer.
That's fine.
Yeah. But you're right, they do have a form, Mark. I recall seeing it, and I will, I'll get that from Sheila and send it to Tony.
Yeah, I, I developed that for him, so.
Well, there you go. I'm looking at it, I'm looking for it now. I might have it here somewhere. Nope, that's not it. Okay.
All right. Well, with that, do we have a vote to see town own land study committee recommendations for the Coast Guard housing sale? Roll call vote.
Gene, Kent, the eye.
Mark, I.
Josh, Andrew, my. Uh, next is the snow and ice budget, FY twenty twenty-two review. Did you want to just, uh, look at that, Tony, compared to other years or?
Yes. Um, in the, in the past, Mark, I think, you know, I don't, I, I think the municipal modernization act kind of changed the process in this, where in the past, at certain thresholds of spending, you'd have to go to the board of selectmen to ask for approval to kind of move forward. And municipal modernization act eliminated that requirement, but I wanted to provide a report on what, you know, what we spent this year on snow and ice. And, and hopefully we're done. So actual expenses right now are at a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, five hundred and eighty-two. Hundred and fifty-six, five eighty-two. Um, compared to twenty twenty-one, we spent a hundred and eighty-three thousand. Twenty twenty was a very, twenty twenty was actually a very mild winter. We only spent fifty-seven thousand. So the last two years, it's obviously been more snow events, more ice events, needing to plow and salt more often. Um, and, you know, another big item here that is the timing of these events. So when they happen on uh, not within regular business hours, you're triggering, you know, OT time as well. So, so staffing cost goes up. Uh, so we will need to find a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-six-five, uh, to transfer into snow and ice at the upcoming town meeting.
Tony, I take it we throw that thirty thousand dollar forecast in there every year knowing that we're, we're going to be at some other point?
It's the only, it's the only line item in our budget that we don't have to balance to. So we have the, we have the ability to run a deficit in that account by law. So, that's why we, we put in, we put that, that thirty thousand in every year, knowing we're probably going to overexpend that.
We had a big year last year. The, the year previous, no, twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Yeah, if I recall, it was, it was a lot of, uh, it was a lot of cold, like ice treatment days last winter. Not so much plowable snow, but more spreading of salt. This year we had both. Uh, so there's no vote needed. I just wanted to give you an update on what, what we were at for spending.
All right. Thanks for that. It's not the, not the worst year, it's not the best year. The next item on the agenda is the, to award the contract and those to proceed to Homer Contracting. So we want to read that motion.
I move that the board of selectmen vote to award the bid contract as presented to Homer Contracting LLC for the library and town hall envelope project and to sign the notice to proceed.
Seconded. Discussion. Tony, it's been a lot of moving parts on this, on this project. Perhaps your best to.
Yes. So we, the town authorized borrowing through CPC funds of five hundred thousand dollars for envelope work at the library, the town hall and this, and the arch at the cemetery, for the cemetery wall. Uh, the library was able to secure an additional fifty thousand dollar grant from Mass Historical Commission for the library related work. So combine those two, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars was our budget. We put out a, we put this bid out and prioritized, you know, the library and then work done by the same contractors that would apply to the town hall. So the base bid of this project in the RFP mostly consumes the, the work at the library. And then there's four alternates off of the base bid. Alternate one is some gutter metalwork. Alternate two is replacement of stone around a window at the library that's deteriorating. Uh, alternate three is the cupola at the town hall. A lot of woodwork and, and leaking occurring there. And then alternate four is the, is mason where our on the town hall chimney. Um, so we put out the, we put out the RFP to see what we get back for bids and all three bids consumed basically the entire budget. So, and only the base and some of the alternates. So right out of the gate, we knew that we didn't have enough funding to authorize all work in that bid package. And certainly we wouldn't have any leftover for the Green Lawn Cemetery wall. The lowest bid that came in was Greenwood Industries and at a previous board of selecta meeting, you authorized us, the board authorized um, us to begin contract negotiations with Greenwood. Unfortunately, shortly thereafter, they withdrew their, withdrew their bid citing increased costs of supplies, um, underestimating, you know, the cost of the job for them. So.
Tony?
Yes.
Do we have a bid bond on them?
I think we do, but they weren't. I'll have to double check. I don't want to.
I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to take ass to it, but, I mean, sometimes people just throw out numbers and hopefully they get it and they're not interested in doing it. And we spend a lot of time, you know, negotiating, getting contracts ready and they walk away. You know, there should, sometimes there should be a price to pay for that.
Absolutely. I think we're still within time, well, well within our timeframe to, you know, pull that bond if you need to. Or if we want to. The next lowest was Homer Contracting, so that's who you're voting on today. We've since met with them, where we've got a contract negotiated. Uh, so your vote tonight will award them the contract, give them a notice to proceed and identify them as the winning bidder. Their base bid was for four hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. Their alternate one bid was for five thousand dollars, which brings it to four ninety-nine. And then their alternate two bid was fifty-seven thousand dollars, which brings the total to five fifty-six. You remember I was saying we only had five hundred and fifty. So we actually went back to Mass Historical, asked them if they would increase their fifty thousand dollar grant to sixty thousand dollars. And they, they gave us a tentative yes. So we're going to be able, now our, now we have five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we can award base bid plus all one and all two. Um, and then we're going to the CPC this year for additional funding that we would be able to award all three and all four under this contract. Homer said they would hold their price. Um, and potentially have leftover funds for, you know, the town, uh, the Green Lawn Cemetery Arch.
All right. Thanks for that explanation. Think you've gone over this with all three selectmen individually for, oh, you're right? Yeah. So, um, Stuck and Canty or Colin, any additional discussion?
I just mentioned something on a side note I talked to Tony about today. I know that the, uh, the weather vane at the town hall is out being restored. So if we do do the cupola, I hope that we can include reinstall on the, the weather vane on the pool board.
Great. Good idea.
All right. If there's no more discussion, uh, we can have a roll call vote.
Gene, Kent, the eye.
Mark, I.
Josh, Andrew, my. Next item on the agenda is the storm water bylaw review. Uh, so this is a uh, chance to introduce people to this storm water bylaw change. That'll be one of the articles this year's town meeting. Fairly lengthy document, twenty pages of this review, but uh, we have an existing storm water bylaw and this, this is a revision to that. Do you want to give some more background info on this, Tony?
Who, who did the, on this? Tony, who did the revision?
So we're working with Stan Tech. By the way, Dan, do you see Jennifer on the call or? You're muted, Dan. Uh, so we, we're working with Jennifer Zoppo from Stan Tech is our consultant. Dan Scrip, Kristen Kent, myself, and, and Vicky Missone.
Uh, Kristen, I'm sorry, Jennifer is currently dealing with her child. She'd like to join us, but maybe a little later. And Kristen Kent is on with the con con right at this minute. She would also like to join us, but she can't do it at the moment.
So maybe we could come back to it if, if that's okay, once they jump, jump on.
All right. So we'll just, we'll just move to the next item on the agenda then. The next item is vote to approve the application for temporary extension of the liquor license for the Bayside. I can read this. Go ahead.
I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the application for a temporary extension of the liquor license for patio slash outdoor service to Bayside Function Corporation, DBA The Bayside, One Southwick Avenue, Nahat, Mass, per chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty-one.
Seconded.
Discussion. Can you remind me how long this permit would extend?
April, we're currently April first.
This, this would extend it to when?
To April first.
Oh, and then what happened? April first, are you saying?
So the, we have the temporary extension authority through the Acts of twenty twenty um, that expire on April first of twenty twenty-two. The legislature is currently debating legislation to extend the April first deadline of twenty twenty-two to April first of twenty twenty-three. This, uh, we had, we had given the approval to the previous owners of Bayside, but it didn't trans- but it didn't transfer when we transferred the liquor license over. So the request has come in that we provide the same authority. Of course, knowing that it could only last a couple of weeks. So there is a, there, if the legislation doesn't get sorry, I'm dealing with two different things here. If, if the legislation doesn't pass, Dan, could you take this so I can answer this?
I can do that. Yeah, the legislature is currently considering a local opt-in, which is to say the local licensing authority, which of course for us is, are you guys. You can decide to take this on your own and make the change permanent moving forward. Right now though, that is sitting in a committee, the Regional Administration Insafely Committee. They had a reporting date of today, but I didn't see anything online. I'll look again tonight. But as of now, pardon, we're still under the COVID sort of discretionary power that you guys have. And it goes until April 1st and hopefully by that time a bill will be passed into law, is signed by, into law that will allow the local licensing authorities to make that a permanent change moving forward. But now as of April 1st, everyone who has outdoor liquor licensing premises needs to revert back to pre-COVID premises on dynamics or go through the entire process, which includes going to the ABCC after seeking approval from your board. So we're, we're in a waiting game right now.
Looking so, so I'm poking around in my thing here to see how long. I see Jerry's on the call, so. Still a little unclear. So if we approve this tonight, how long is it good for?
The end of the month, two weeks.
Two weeks, okay, so.
Unless, unless the legislature amends the Acts of 2020 between now and then. And if they extend it to 2023, then so would anybody that we gave extension under that power to.
So Mr. Chairman, this puts the Bayside in the same vote as the Tides and Ocean View. So if the legislature extends it for another year, then all three of those establishments will be automatically extended by this vote?
Well, we have the authority to do that. We have the.
We have the authority to do that. If they don't, Dan, do we have the authority, if they don't extend it, the legislature, does the town have the ability to extend it on their own?
No, it has to go back, back to the original process, which involves the state. So we don't have that authority.
And if it, if it does get extended by the legislature, we have the authority to have it be for a lesser time? In other words, not necessarily to April of 2023. I'll be, I'll be explicit about my concern. My concern is that, you know, there are neighbors like right up against this, this proposed open space and I don't, I, I'd like to find out from the neighbors whether it's something they're comfortable with. If it, you know, for, for, if we're talking about for another year, that, that's really my concern.
I, I don't think this affects that. I mean, I think we'd be able to do that anyway pursuant to the formal process with setting limitations on the, on the premises of the license, like we do for the, you know, times and whatnot. I don't think that'd be affected by this. But yeah, we could limit it. We have the discretion. That's what the whole new bill is about, about giving the local authority discretion to increase it or not.
Did we get an application? I know I've got the, the plans for the layout.
We don't, it's just a, it's just.
May I speak for a moment? Excuse me. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Jerry. Go ahead.
I'm here, Jerry Raphael. So I don't know if this is a clerical error or not, but when I transferred these things, the license got transferred. You guys gave the previous owner permission to have it here. He had the application, he submitted the plan and you guys approved it last year. I'm only looking to extend it to April 1st until the legislator would, could vote on it. And I understand your concern with the neighbors because I have the concern with the neighbors too. But I'm looking at the Tides, I'm looking at Ocean View, I'm looking at the VFW. I'm looking at every person that has an establishment like this has permission to do what I'm doing here. And they had, you guys voted it in previously last year. I'm just asking to extend what, what's existing right now.
Yep, to April 1st, right?
Okay, first until you guys make a decision.
You, you lost me somewhere on Southwick Avenue. What is the timeframe that we're looking to extend this for? We don't have it written in here.
All right, let me, let me, let me try and explain it simpler. We are given the authority by the state legislature under the Acts of 2020 to go through a streamlined process of expanding a liquor license by simply doing it through a Board of Selectment vote. Instead of having to do a formal application and a newspaper posting and a hearing and, you know, the standard process. We have the authority to kind of streamline it and just do a simple vote at a Board of Selectment meeting. That authority was given to us through the Acts of 2020. Originally given to us through a executive order and then the legislature put it in the Acts of 2020. Any, but, but any establishment, so I'm going to explain, any establishment that we have provided the temporary expansion, it expires on April 1st of 2022 as stated by the law. So anybody that wanted to continue to do that after April 1st, 2022, they're going to have to go through the standard longer process. So what this application is asking is to give them for the next two weeks, the same authority that was previously provided to the previous owner. Now, shouldn't, go ahead.
Shouldn't the timeframe that we're talking about be in the motion? All it says in the motion is a temporary extension.
No, because it's dictated by the Acts, by the state law. So we never put an end date. We just, when we awarded the temporary extensions due to COVID, we just awarded them without an end date because the executive order provided it. Then the legislature put it into the Acts of 2020. So we've basically just been going with whatever the legislature allowed.
So we don't need a date?
Is the date defined in the chapter 20 Acts of 2021?
Now, if the legislature, correct. So if we don't include a date, the legislature changes the Acts of 2020 between now and April 1st and extends it to 2023, which is the proposal. Then Bayside, Tides, the Knights, Ocean View, anyone that we had provided the approval to would automatically continue to have that approval until the new date set by the legislature.
Okay.
We do have the ability though, based on the chairman's concerns and a later date to come in and say, you know, we want to, we, we want to stop these by the end of the year or the end of the summer and make them go through the standard process. You know, by that time, we could do that, but I don't think it's necessary given that the current ledge, the current law expires in two weeks anyways. So I don't think it's necessary to take up tonight.
I agree.
Hey Jerry, can you answer a couple of questions?
Yes, absolutely.
So the stonework and so on shown in this, in this plan, that doesn't exist at this point or does exist?
Everything you see in that plan exists. That's the previous plan, the previous owner did, Dana, God, Dell, DBA, Home Business, Bayside. I came in, bought the DBA business doing Bayside, bought the license, bought the business and bought the building. The only thing we did was transfer the liquor license and basically transfer what it's happening right now. I, you know, I just thought, I reached out to Tony to say, hey, by the way, do I have this right? Go outside because right now I have.
Your phone's breaking up a little bit, Jerry.
Just do not go outside with a, you know, they congregate. Okay, you there?
Yeah, your phone was just kind of speeding up and slowing down. What, what you're saying is that the, the plan that we are looking at is the same plan that Bayside had given up, given us, and everything in there is the existing conditions.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I was, that's what I was wondering. Okay.
Yeah, I went down there today, this Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good. All right. I don't have any further comment.
Thank you.
Any other, any additional discussion?
I have none.
None. Okay, then roll call vote.
Gene, Candy, I.
Mark, Colin, I.
Josh, Andrew, mine. All right, moving on to ongoing business, nine, Little Hot Road update. Want to summarize this for us, Tony?
Sure. There really isn't much of an update, other than we continue to have discussions, you know, with the CPC as they're going through their process. I can tell you that the CPC is, you know, very eager to hear from us as to what we're going to be doing. And I explained to them, you know, and the reason is because they have a ton of different applications in front of them and they're trying to juggle, you know, trying to, you know, how they're going to award and be able to, you know, fund the projects that they want to approve. However, we don't have a, we still don't have a new date yet for a, for an auction. Dan, do you want to report on the, your conversation with the HUD attorney?
Yes, I spoke to Attorney Doc Kickel yesterday afternoon and HUD wants to do a more comprehensive appraisal versus a walk, what they call a walk-by appraisal. And they want that appraisal to better study their position in terms of trying to make a compromise with the town. So that's what they're doing now. Their first attempt wasn't successful because they were not given access by the tenant. But I think that has been worked, that's been resolved. So now they're just looking to get the appraisal in there, appraiser in there so they can complete the appraisal. And then I would expect the auction to be redated or re-noticed. They have to give us two weeks of notice before they can do anything, at least two weeks.
So, you know, the, the reason that's important is because if the auction occurs before town meeting and is successful, then the article will be, you know, withdrawn, the application to CPC would be, would be withdrawn. So still waiting on, that's a big question mark out there that we're waiting on regarding the project. We, you know, we have a, when you, myself, Gene, you being Mr. Chairman Josh, Gene, myself, Austin, our fire chief, members of the CPC, Dan Scrip, when we went and reviewed, when we went and visited the property to assess its condition and look at, you know, what we were getting involved in. We, you know, took notice to many health issues related to the residents inside living in the property. We've been working with them about getting them out of there and finding a new place to live. You know, there's no heat, there is no water, there is electricity, but it's certainly an unsafe structure and not, not in a condition for proper housing. So we have a hearing tomorrow at 6:30 as the Board of Health. John Coulon is on the call now. Prefer to hold off until tomorrow night to have further discussion about, about that element of nine, Little Hot Road because it is posted. But I also didn't want to ignore it. I wanted to, you know, be open and talk about the fact that we are meeting on that tomorrow.
Yep. So that's an open meeting tomorrow, so.
It's actually a hearing, Josh.
Hearing, okay, yeah, public hearing, so.
Health hearing.
Let's, let's defer discussion about that hearing till the hearing.
So any other, do you have any other questions or about the CPC process?
I do not. I mean, you know, I listened to the CPC meeting and you know, they have quite a few requests this year and so we'll see if this makes it out of committee, so to speak. It may or may not. Anything else on nine, Little Hot Road?
I don't, uh, tomorrow night I'll speak about it, but I just hope that HUD can get through their appraisal and auction this sooner rather than later, because I think it will answer a lot of questions for the town.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, next is a vote to open and close annual town meeting warrant.
We can skip that.
Okay, we're not going to do that. All right.
We are going to do budget adjustments though.
All right, so moving down to positive budget adjustments then.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve, is that one of that? The FY23 budget adjustments. Am I there, Tony? Hold on.
Yeah.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the FY23 budget adjustments as presented and sent to the Finance Advisory Finance Committee for the ongoing review.
Seconded.
Second.
Discussion. You sent us the spreadsheet, Tony, I think.
Can you see it on, on the screen?
Shut down. Yes, I see it. Yep. All right, start talking and walking.
All right. So we recently received an updated number from MWRA regarding our assessment. It is less than what we expected, still an increase over last year, but less of an increase as expected. So we're adjusting our appropriated amount for the MWRA assessment down from the original draft of $593,035 to $580,000. We've also received, now Wind Water and Sewer has gone through their contract phase with their new O and M contractor, which was a huge impact on our assessment was what that cost, what the cost of the new contract was going to be. They've completed that and provided us updated number of assess, for the assessment. And it's well below what we expected. So originally, I don't know if you recall me talking about this in the last, the last year or so, but we had, we had expected, they were telling us to be prepared for a 40 to 50% increase in our assessment. So last year's, the current fiscal year budget that we're in accounted for that. And the original draft for next fiscal year accounted for that. But we just since received updated numbers and it's actually very well below what they had told us to expect. So the good news here is, you know, for the current fiscal year, I'm sorry, for the original draft for FY23 for the next year's, next year's budget, we were, we were looking at a $579,000 assessment. We're bringing that down. We're bringing that down, um, two hundred, almost two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, um, we don't need to prepare for such a large, uh, increase, which is good news. Um, other news, I wouldn't really say bad, um, but other news is that the current fiscal year that we're built upon, uh, included a five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar assessment, which it's not going to be that much for the current fiscal year. Uh, so, um, because we were planning for much more, our water sewer rates accounted for that, and we've actually been, um, we're actually ahead of schedule on collecting, uh, revenues for what we need in order to pay for, you know, all of our costs. So what we've done is an analysis to estimate what the, uh, fiscal year twenty-three, uh, sewer rate will be, which is eleven dollars and ninety cents, based on the updated numbers that you're voting on, uh, today, uh, um. The estimated water rate is ten dollars and seven cents. Compared to the current rates, uh, fourteen dollars and eight cents and nine and nine dollars and ninety-two cents. So, um, we kind of had a choice of how we wanted to handle this adjustment of needing less money to pay for the current fiscal year. And what we've decided was that what we're gonna do is for this, uh, third billing period, we're gonna reduce our water sewer rate to our estimated water sewer rate for next year. Uh, so, will be a little bit cheaper, um, than the previous two billing cycles. Uh, we'll collect enough to cover our costs for Lynn Water Sewer for the current fiscal year, and there'll be zero increase going into next fiscal year. Um, the next part of this spreadsheet is water sewer principal debt. Um, in our water sewer retained earnings, uh, in meetings with the Finance Committee, we had extra funds in our retained earnings that we weren't appropriating, uh, we were, and the Finance Committee suggested using it to pay down some of our debt. So we are, through this change, will be appropriating three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from retained earnings, uh, to pay down some of our short-term water sewer debt. Um, mostly that'll go towards, that will go towards, all of it will go towards, uh, the remaining balance of four hundred and thirty-something thousand dollars, uh, on our twenty-eighteen four million dollars sewer borrowing. So, with this appropriation, if approved at town meeting, we'll only have about a hundred thousand, uh, left in debt service on that borrowing, which we can pay for next year.
But I think, um, I think it's good proactive thinking to, um, level out the, the next billing cycle to next year's level, so, uh, people's bills aren't, um, fluctuating wildly. And, um, certainly nice to pay off three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of debt, so I like it.
Yeah.
I don't have any objections to it. I think it's, it's, it's sound planning. My only concern is that we're talking about estimates here, and they're estimates that are in our favor, uh, which, which is good, but they are estimates. And I, I did talk to Tony about this a little earlier in the week, and, um, one of my, some of my thinking was, why don't we just close out the year, and so we're not talking about estimates anymore. We, we know what the real numbers are. Um, but I mean, I think, um, I think paying off the short-term debt is a good idea. Um, I have no problem with reducing the rates in the final quarter, um. You know, um, the, the other way of doing it would be closing out the year and then dealing with the rates next year. But either way, I think it's a benefit to the town, so.
I, I'm, I'd, yeah, thank you, Mark. I, I, after speaking with you, it got me to kind of back to the drawing board and spoke with Allison, thought about it, so instead of, I'm, I'm kind of finding a medium ground. So instead of reducing the rates, um, you know, twice as much just for one billing cycle, and then having to bump them back up, you know, going into next year, I'll just reduce them a little bit more in line with what we're doing next year. It still brings in enough that will be, we're sure to be covered for the current fiscal year. It gives the, the rate payers a little bit of a break, and won't see much of an increase going into next year, should this, you know, pass the way that it's written. Um, I, you know, obviously, I'm, I'm disappointed that uh, we weren't told until halfway through the fiscal year, uh, what, you know, the new assessment was. Even though it's good news that it's less than what they, you know, told us to prepare for. Um, I would have rather had that, you know, earlier in the fiscal year, better planning. Um, but, you know, that's there. They, they read you kind of the doomsday approach and what to, uh, prepare for. So when it's only a ten percent increase, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt as bad, as bad as a forty percent, right?
Yeah, well, in addition to that, I mean, I don't know what the, what the terms of this borrowing for Lynn Water and Sewer, uh, but I'm assuming it's probably a forty years, um, for the capital improvement, so with that, we'll be able to, you know, we're not looking at them increases every year like that, so it's only ten percent then. I mean, I think we can, we can plan a little bit better next year, um, and as they go through. And how long is this debt for, for the water sewer? Do you know? I mean, it's.
Well, there, I know that it's a, it's a forty-year contract that's for their O and M, um, uh, company.
Yeah, I think.
I imagine the debts rolled into that.
Are they going with the same company?
Um, so they went with a new company that was bought at, that was then bought by the old company. Uh, Violia.
Violia, yeah.
Uh, and the new company is Suez, um, but Violia just bought Suez right after they switched.
So what typically, when you're going through those contract changes, is that the, the new, you know, they, they have to go through a whole capital improvement, um, processes, say, okay, this is what it's gonna look like over the next forty years. These are improvements that we have to make so that you can take a, get a proper bid on that. Um, so now all of that information is out. We know what the improvements are going to be. We know what the, what the rate increases are going to be, so that, that's good, I guess, and it's, it's a lot lower than you had expected and what they told you, so, that's good news.
Yeah.
Hey, Tony, maybe I missed it, but where does the retained earnings come from?
Well, it's, it's essentially, um, a free cash amount that sits within the enterprise account, so it's made from, um, less spending than expected and more revenue than predicted from previous fiscal years.
Understood, okay, thanks.
So the, the big, one of the reasons why there was so much this past year, um, was because of COVID and concerns about, you know, how we were gonna be impacted by that. Um, we didn't pay as much on debt as we typically do. We still paid our minimum amounts, but usually we try to pay more than that. So we kind of left, uh, left it in retained earnings, you know, not knowing how we were gonna be impacted, especially on the enterprise side, if people were gonna be able to pay their utility bills, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, this is a good, we, it's, it's certainly, uh, we feel comfortable using this amount to pay down that debt, debt at this time, now that we're.
Well, it's, 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 it's very, it's very important, um, that you're going after the short-term debt right now with this, with this money, because we know what the Fed just did, they're increasing the, the rates, and so if we go long-term with this, you know, we're gonna be paying a lot more. So let's, let's pay off the short-term debt, and we're, we're not gonna have long-term debt at a higher rate.
Yep.
Makes sense.
All right, any other discussion? Uh, with that, roll call vote on whether to approve the ju- budget adjustments.
Gene, Kathy, I.
Black, Colin, and I.
Josh, Andrew, Mike. Uh, the next item is a vote to approve and submit comments on DHCD draft guidelines for MBTA housing choice law.
Mr. Chairman, can I point out that, uh, Kristen Kent, CONCOM Chair?
Oh, yes, I noticed that too, yes.
Are now on board, so it's up to you, of course, but you might want to bring the stormwater topic.
By all means, uh, let's return to the, uh, stormwater bylaw review, um. So, um, Kristen, what you missed is we talked about, um, we're just gonna sort of introduce this, um, article to the public, um. And we stated that we do have a stormwater bylaw now, and this is a revision to that, um, that bylaw as mandated by the MIPSY, I forget the acronym, but, um, yeah, um, so with that, um, wanna give us the Cliff Notes version?
All right, um, I think, so the, the changes we need to make are twofold, I think. One is, um, so we comply with the federal MS four permit, which is a requirement, um, we have to do it. We have to make some of these changes. The other changes, um, are about streamlining the process, so it's easier for residents to do. Um, so it's more of an administrative process and less of going overboard, taking the time, it's time-consuming, it's confusing. Um, and the third is, one of the issues that came up as part of the Wetlands Protection Bylaw was the issue of stormwater and how that was something that was overlooked, um, the way our current bylaw was structured, and that this is an opportunity to kind of zero in a little bit and kind of help, um, fix some of the stormwater issues that we've been having, um, through, you know, when people do new development, um, having them make accommodations to keep the water on their property or to prevent it going on to their neighbors or prevent it to go, going into the road. So those are kind of the three aims of the changes that are proposed.
And, um.
Jennifer, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, um, I'm Jen Zoppo. I work for a consultant Stan Tech, um, helping the town, uh, just figure out what, what revisions to make in this bylaw. Um, my goal was primarily making sure that we're meeting the MS four permit requirements, um, as Kristen mentioned. Um, and then obviously, um, you know, we discussed some of these other changes as well, that, um, make sense for the town to, to complete, um, at this time.
All right.
Uh, how, how are we doing, Jen? I assume you, you work on these, um, items for other communities as well. Um, are, is, uh, the proposed stormwater bylaw changes, um, you know, similar in line with what you see in other communities?
Very similar, yes. Um, there's a lot of standard language that's kind of used across the board in, in all communities. Um, so your bylaw, um, with these changes will be, you know, very similar to other communities. Um, the permit, uh, requires a threshold of one acre, um, which we're kind of choosing to do a little two-tiered system, um, and lower that threshold, um, which is, has happened in, um, several other communities of what, as well, have chosen to do the, the similar approach. Um, so it's, it's consistent with what, um, I've seen elsewhere.
Are all the changes we see in red, changes that you've made?
Yes, um.
A lot of work.
Yeah, that, well, there was a lot of cutting and pasting too, just to kind of reorganize, um, and just, you know, make it a little bit more consistent. Um, but yeah.
Well, I mean, one of the, uh, I think one of the main changes of this is applying it to areas of less than one acre, right? It, it, did I understand that correctly, that previously it really only applied if you're talking about a development of over an acre? Which is very, almost nobody.
Yeah, my understanding is that there haven't been any, uh, permits submitted previously, because nothing has been over that one acre threshold. Um, so that is certainly one of the bigger changes that's, um, really wasn't what, um, had originally triggered us to make these revisions. Um, it just makes sense, I think, for the town. Um, what really triggered it, the biggest change, I think, from the MS war permit is the actual, um, performance requirements. Um, so, um, certain removals are required for pollutants, for phosphorus removal, um, and TSS removal, and those kind of, um, removal percentages have changed, so that was one of the main, um, kind of drivers for making these updates.
I think one of the shortcomings of our existing bylaw is we had one because it was required, but it wasn't doing anything for us. You know, in a town where we know we have stormwater issues, um, the threshold was so high that it wasn't affecting anybody. It wasn't an opportunity for the town to be better. And so, since we're making these changes anyway, it made sense, you know, we have fairly small properties for most of the town. It made sense to lower that threshold so that we can catch some of these newer, you know, some of these larger impervious projects, um, and help minimize, you know, incrementally minimize our stormwater issue.
Yeah.
Jennifer, Jennifer and, um, Kristen, I might have missed this, but the other change is that the review and enforcement is now with the Conservation Commission um, under this, and is that, um, what we're seeing in most communities? It seems appropriate to me.
So I think the intent is for this to be an administrative approval for most projects, so it would be something that's done as part of the building permit so that it's not going to a commission, a committee, um, it'll streamline it for residents, it's less confusing, it'll be as far to one submittal. Um, so it'll be faster. The other thing is, um, conservation already reviews stormwater under the state regulations. So, um, since we are.
Oh. Good, awesome. Also.
Hmm, we lost your audio, Kristen, unless I lost all.
You want to, uh, finish her sentence, Jen?
I think where she was going is that the, the CONCOM manages the Wetlands Protection Act, is that right?
Yeah.
So it's just provides a little bit more consistency, um, having them also manage this piece, um.
Right, and what's, and, and what's different here compared to many other towns is, you know, we don't have like a planning department. We don't have a full-time staff, member of the plan, of the planning department. Um, it's just the elected board, uh, so, you know, and similar with CONCOM, you know, Kristen, serving as our, um, you know, our agent in, in some ways, but is, uh, you know, with the ability to kind of review, uh, these applications in a more streamlined process.
Makes a lot of sense to me, rather than it be a planning board function.
Yep.
I agree.
Uh, we, we were careful about, you know, how low we went with that threshold, so six hundred square feet, you know, you're talking about, um, twenty by thirty-foot additions, rather large-size projects. We really didn't want to trigger, um, it on, you know, small projects like sheds or small garages or small additions. It's really more for, um, you know, uh, projects that have a, uh, legitimate impact on, on groundwater, stormwater.
Sounds like a good compromise. I mean, Kristen said it well. We had a, we had a stormwater bylaw, but because very few, uh, properties are over an acre that have a project going, it really wasn't applying to, and it really effectively was doing nothing, so, um, makes a lot of sense to apply it really across the board for any decent-sized project in town.
So we are, uh, finalizing the draft. It will be available, um, in the clerk's office. It will be, a copy of it will be in the appendix of the FINCOM book prior to town meeting. Uh, we'll put it on the website, and folks will have an opportunity to review it and discuss it, you know, prior to and at town meeting in May.
All right, anything more on the stormwater bylaw review?
Welcome back, Kristen. I'm glad that you didn't literally freeze.
I don't know what happened, sorry.
Uh, okay, all right, that brings us back to the, um, the DHCD draft guidelines for MBTA.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thanks, nice to meet you all.
Um, so this is something that, that was discussed at the last, um, Board of Selectment meeting, there's, um, some guidelines about. For, um, that are, I think, intended to encourage, uh, multifamily dwellings near, um, MBTA stops and you qualify as a. As what, as a, one of these communities, if you have a. Computer stop within half a mile of your town, which, um, the commuter stop in Lynn is within half a mile of the rotary, so. Therefore, these guidelines are supposed to apply in the hot, but, um, Dan did a nice coverage on it last time, basically they're. Virtually impossible for the town of Nahat, so, uh, we'd like to, um, send a letter and, and state our case.
I have a draft letter that I've sent to each of you, um, if you have any. You know, comments or if you'd like to discuss it now, we could do that, um, what I'd like to do is put this on our website and. You know, include the link for residents who might want to submit comments on their own, um, or sign on to this. The, the comments are due this, uh, by the thirty first, and we're. We have, we are continuing to meet with DHCD and other communities, uh, Dan, do you want to talk about the committee that you're on?
Yeah, the Massachusetts Municipal Law Association formed a ad hoc committee, um, of five members, including myself. Uh, Barbara St. Andres, Suzie Murphy, um, you guys went to Donna Brewer from Harry's and, um. Someone from, from actually Rhode Island, so we are going to put together a letter, we were already well into the process, we're gonna have it approved and reviewed by the. NMLA, and hopefully we'll be able to join with the Mass Municipal Association to add some more weight to the letter, and it looks a lot like the letter that you guys. And, and Tony been putting together, um, basically saying it's an unverification, the guidelines are overstretching the bounds that are. Set by section three A, which is the amendment to chapter forty A that is a reason why we're all here, and it's, it's, it's way beyond what the. Content, the statute contemplates, um, and as Tony mentioned, the practical effect on small towns like us, Plimpton. And a few other ones is just devastating in terms of, um, the possibility of having to dedicate over seven percent, almost eight percent of our landmass to. Uh, zoning multifamily and having to dedicate thirty, what's that, thirty-five percent, I think, or maybe twenty-seven percent, some, a very high percentage of our. Housing stock to multifamily zoned districts, we don't have to build anything, but we just zone it and basically pave the way. You know, I might be a little biased, but paved the way for developers who want to develop multifamily who won't be constrained by forty B, so it's really a, a windfall for those folks. Um, but for little towns like us and a few other ones around, it's, it's very difficult, and just to, just to put it into perspective, the acreage that. We are being asked to dedicate to multi-housing is, is Kelly Greens and Johnson School, essentially fifty acres. And that comes in right under fifty acres, it's, it's, um, it's a much more than any other town or city is being asked to dedicate. And that is a big topic of, uh, the letter that Tony has drafted.
Yeah, so not, not, uh, not Kelly Greens, the, uh, the clubhouse, Kelly Greens, the entire golf course.
The whole nine, whole chilada, and not only, and to that point, uh, Josh, not only the Johnson School, but the playground. Uh, be- behind it, beside it, the parking lot, everything that belongs to J C. Um, the whole, the whole lot, combine that with Kelly Greens, and that's what the state is at, at the moment, that's what the state is asking us to dedicate to. A multi-housing zoning.
Yeah.
Which we have none right now.
And we don't have a, we don't have a, um, subway stop or commuter rail stop in the hut, but we're, we qualify by virtue of. The proximity to the one in Lynn.
And as Tony will tell you, the word bus stop, the words bus stop appear nowhere in section three A, they don't exist, and if they weren't there. It would be an obvious thing to have included by the legislature, to have it part of the process, these guidelines are sort of thrown in there to nowhere, and that's a big point of contention for. Us.
So the, the closest, um, Nahat controlled property where housing exists. Is on our side of the Causeway in Little Nahat, and that's almost two miles away from the closest MBTA station. Um, so, you know, that's one of our bear, larger points, uh. Obviously, as Dan mentioned, uh, the draft guidelines require a minimum of fifty acres at fifteen housing units per acre. It equates to seven hundred and fifty units.
Tony, so, so that people aren't overly concerned about what we're talking about tonight. We're using the golf course and the Johnson School comparatively, that's, you can't build anything there, so.
Right, yeah, right, we will have to, we would have to convert seven hundred and fifty, uh, of our fourteen hundred.
What it does, it's not a, it's not a development requirement, it's a zoning requirement, we would have to overlay. Um, fifty acres of buildable lot in town. To allow for, um, multifamily housing.
And the golf course is not buildable lots.
Right, yeah, that's just.
Not developable is the word they use.
Not developable.
Or, or developable, it's, it's the wetlands, it's a flood plain.
Um, even if we, you know, even if we somehow. Uh, could do this, you know, the impact that that would have on our community, the amount of people that would add to our community, to our school system, the. Demand on our, on our public safety, you know, the, our roads, our, our water and sewer infrastructure, I mean, the. It's such a compounding effect, plus, you know, the forty B requirement that we're talking about. Is, uh, you know, ten percent of your housing stock has to be affordable, so. It makes that goal even farther away by increasing the number of housing units in town. I mean, for towns that actually do meet their ten percent, uh, threshold. This might eliminate their, you know, they may become out of compliance by having to do this.
Yeah, so I, I definitely support sending, uh, this letter, uh, ma- maybe we can. Vote on whether or not we approve sending the letter and, and send our edits after the fact.
I can do that, Mr. Chairman, if you want, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize the town administrator. To submit comments pending changes on DHCD draft guidelines for MBTA housing choice law.
What's that? I'm sorry, yeah, that was good.
Uh, it's been seconded, um, any additional discussion? Hearing and seeing non-roll call vote?
Gene Canty, I.
Josh Andrew my. Uh, okay, next item is preserving East Point, um. Last time we talked about, um, getting the attorney here to give us an update, um. The next date is better for Jim Masterman, so. I'm gonna defer that part until the next meeting and, um, I don't know if it's, uh, beyond that, I don't have any updates on East Point, um. Gene or Mark? All right, Town Administrative Report.
Uh, so Lowlands Drainage updated, I wanted to provide an update, mosquito control was in town, uh, last week. Uh, performing some ditch maintenance for, uh, for us from, uh, the Ward Road area down to the Flash Road area. Um, basically the missing, uh, link between of the ditch system that sends water from the. Lowlands neighborhood all the way to Bear Pond, um, given that we had used mosquito control to, uh. Do dredging from Flash Road to Bear Pond last year. They did a tremendous job, uh, if you have an opportunity to walk down there and take a look, um, you can actually. See the ditch now, it's flowing, um, in the correct direction, uh, we've, you know, created access. So that we can maintain it more regularly, literally, and, um, really at no extra cost for the town. So the way that mosquito control, uh, Essex County mosquito control works is the thirty-six communities within. Uh, their region. Through our cherry, cherry sheet funding from the state, we send money to mosquito control, ours is about anywhere from like seven to ten thousand dollars. We get that in return, uh, just on catch basin applications alone. The work that they did down, um, at the ditch this past week was, you know. If we had done that on our own, we would have easily spent at least fifty thousand dollars, if not more, um, so. Pennies on the dollar for the town, huge improvement for the town, um, and, you know, we're very excited that the work got done.
I went down there, uh, uh, Tony, it looks, looks really good, um, I heard they call it Barletta Brook now, is that right?
Yeah, DBW is dubbed it Barletta Brook, I, I, uh, my father got a kick out of that, you know. I finally got something named after the family, it's a stormwater ditch.
Well, my only other suggestion, I mean, I, I don't know if it's worth even looking into, but, um, it's a nice access point, uh. At, at Flat, at, at, uh, Flash Road, um, at Mitchell's Corner, the, and, you know, is there any possible way of connecting that? Um, to the Heritage Trail system?
Uh, possibly, it's, it's really, really, uh, wet, right, once you. You know, that first like hundred feet, fifty feet from the street is, you know, not too bad to walk on, but from there to. You know, where almost like halfway to where you get to the Heritage Trail, it's really, really wet in there, um, so maybe not. You know, it would, it may, it might not like connect directly, you, you maybe come in there, take a left and connect to the trail kind of behind a couple of those. Homes, um. Yeah, if you put your boots on and take a walk, you'll see what I mean, like you sink, you sink really, really deep in that, it gets really wet. We are gonna maintain it, we're gonna try to maintain it so that we can, you know, no large. Um, you know, vines or trees or shrubs grow there so that we'll always be able to get in there to be, to maintain the ditch. Um, the other, uh, item, you know, that I don't have listed on here is the Linway Four Spain project, uh. We've, um, we're finally, the pipe has, has, uh, been delivered, um, so we've been. Using the bypass pipe that, you know, sits above ground, uh, since. I don't know, November or October, when we turned it on, um, we're now, uh, GeoSo's actually now. Uh, digging pits and starting to pull, uh, new pipe through the old pipe in sections, so, uh, we're, we're. We have an update tomorrow, a progress meeting tomorrow, and, um, be able to. Uh, provide more information, uh, in the coming days, uh, I hope, we, we hope to kind of do a, a more public. Press release of some sort to provide residents an update as to where we are on that project, uh, in the coming weeks.
I assume that's what the, uh, lane closure is in the Causeway right now, I mean, on the Linway right now, of digging them, those ditches where they feed the pipes.
Yeah, so you, once you start pulling, you can't stop, um, so if you're gonna pull a thousand feet of pipe. You have to, you need, um, like two thousand feet above ground. So you build a thousand feet above and then you pull it through, you know, where you, where you need it, so. Um, they really need that dedicated lane in order to do that work. Um, I, I will, uh, I'll, I'll be in touch with each of you about, you know, doing a site visit to see them do the work.
Yeah, I love to see.
And then just on the, uh, the Lowlands thing, uh, that's a great step to get connected because. Um, Ward been done, I guess, last, and the, uh, stick at the goal that. That was done particularly from, from Flash Road towards Bear Pond was done last year, but the, the missing link was what they did this year, so. Uh, important piece, so really happy to see that get done.
Uh, we've also, yesterday, um, I received our first progress report, uh, from Dubois King. The stormwater engineer who's working on the Lowlands, uh, stormwater issue for us, stormwater improvements. Uh, we will be receiving progress updates, uh, every fifteenth, so, um, once a month. And high level overview is, uh. The site visit, you know, they've completed their site visit, they are working with, um, Lighthouse Land Survey, uh, to. Complete the survey work, um. And they're, hopefully, will be completed, that's our next step, um, they're also doing internal coordination. Uh, for the natural resource identification, looking at, you know, old, um. Documentation, and then they will follow that up with additional site visits. Um, they've also are in, you know, working with, uh, the. Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program to identify any type of, uh, natural resources requiring protection. They're fifteen percent complete on evaluating the existing system, um. They're looking at some surveys, some CAD drawings that from previous plans that we've proposed, uh, so they're, they're moving right along. Um, obviously not much to report quite yet, because they're still in the early stages.
Thanks for that, Tony, um. On the last meeting, we talked, uh, the impromptu pickleball court change at Flash Road Playground, and when we spoke, I think it was Monday. Um, the contractor had, it was misunderstanding about what they were supposed to bid and, uh, you straightened them out and they're, uh, they're still working on, uh. The change order quote, right?
Right, the change order, uh. The change order quote that they gave us, uh, just this last week was, um, just paint. Uh, which isn't really what we were asking them to, to find out for us, so they're going back, uh, he did mention. Um, he's reaching out to Green Acres, my concern is that if they hit any rocks when augering for fences or net posts. Uh, that pavement could lift up, but I'll see what Green Acres has to think of that, so he did identify kind of a similar concern. Um, but we asked him to give us basically, uh, three. Three different quotes, um, one would be, you know, the, the Cadillac of. You know, changing one of the tennis courts to four pickleball courts with fencing in between each of them and a large fence. Dividing those four from the tennis court, um, number two, uh. Doing the same thing except not having the fencing in between each pickleball court, but just having a, a section of fence separating. The pickleball courts and the tennis court, and three, you know, not doing any fencing, but just having, you know, one large space with a. Pickleball, with the four pickleball courts and the tennis court, you know, in the same fenced in area, so. Waiting this, wait to get that back.
Yep, okay, thanks, just wanted to give you an update, um, anything else for your report, Tony?
Nope, that's all.
All right, so last item on the agenda is Citizens Forum.
And before we go, before we go there, can I just make mention of something?
Of course.
And, and Dan, I would ask you this question, if you would, uh, when can we get this on now, back online and get a meeting with these folks? That situation is getting worse instead of better.
What sort of meeting are you thinking of, Jen?
Something to say, hey, why can't we have these flight patents go over the. Something to say, hey, why can't we have these flight patents go over the Causeway and not over Little Nahat?
Well, the, the, well, we can.
To, what Dan's gonna say is two separate issues.
Yeah.
What you're, what you're experiencing today, uh, and it's just a clarification, Gene, we should, I think we could certainly reach out and try to apply pressure to somebody to have a conversation about what's going on today. That is separate, that's separate than the RNAV issue.
All right.
Um, is that accurate what you're talking about, is talking about what's happening today?
Yes, e- exactly.
You know, in that regard, I know Tony's making efforts to get the, the, uh, Noise Abatement Committee up and running again. So that, that's sort of what their purview would be, to take action.
So, um, so, um, I know George Mahoven's been appointed to that committee, was the, uh, what about the retired pilot who's who lives in Little Nahat, was he appointed, do you know, Tony?
No, his, he hasn't been appointed yet, I got his number from Dan on Friday and haven't called him yet.
But, um, I did talk to, um, George Mahoven yesterday, newly appointed George Mahoven, and, uh, he's ready to hit the ground running, so, um, he's gonna, he'll definitely be a fire under, uh, whoever else gets appointed to that committee. Um, he's.
Well, as as long as we can keep it alive and well and maybe do something with it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think.
Last week I sat here, I made it a point, because you know I can look out over to Little Nahat. Fifty plus planes in just over an hour, that's a plane a minute. And they don't go on the, the perimeter, they go directly down the middle of Little Nahat, I just don't understand it. I know we're a small town, we don't have a big voice, but I don't understand why they can't move another half mile north and and accomplish the same routing.
Are they arriving or departing, Gene?
Arriving. Arriving, Dan, it's, it's crazy.
I I believe it.
Yes, I think, I think, uh, getting this, this, this Noise Abatement Committee has been sort of dormant for a few years, I think, so getting that, them um, amped up and ramped up, um, will be a good, a good first step.
Well, at least maybe they can answer a couple of questions.
We had asked, you know, about that in our conversations, Dan and I had asked those, you know, a while ago, and you remember, Dan, they were kind of, they talked a lot about, um, you know, with like the, with less flights, uh, less traveling due to COVID, it's kind of been the, the approach lanes have been less, um, congested, and so pilots have kind of had the, uh, you know, luxury to them to kind of approach, you know, a little bit more freely in their angle.
Yeah, the war you're looking for is sequencing.
Sequencing.
If sequencing, when there's a lot of traffic, the planes are basically sequenced in, and I'll bet, Gene, if you actually time those flights overhead, you're gonna appear that the flights are pretty, the standard deviation is very close because there's time. They have to be separated by a certain amount of time, and to sequence them in, they just come in, bang, bang, bang. As Tony mentioned, if they're just coming in less sporadically, they have much more leeway to come in, a bit bigger bubble to fly through, so to speak.
Well, if a flight, the flight going over every minute is is just in in the exact route, which is amazing, and so somebody, somebody has to have that all set up. I'm, I'm not a nautical, I'm not a pilot, you'd know a lot more about it than I would, but somehow there's got to be some corrective action taken so that we can accomplish both. They don't have to, it it expense the fuel by dropping lower on the Causeway as opposed to running right over Little Nahat. It's, it, it at least it appears to me to be distance wise the same. I could be totally wrong. I want somebody to tell me that.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll try to find, um, we'll, we'll obviously continue to put, uh, effort into getting the Noise Abatement Committee, uh, back up and running. And we'll try to, you know, first, first order of business is getting them in front of the right people, you know, dealing with the issues of today. Last week, was it last week, Dan, or two weeks ago? The cloudy day, the Oricast day?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, in the, in my office, in the basement of Town Hall, it sounded like, you know, it was, it sounded like, like thunder, consistent thunder all day. Uh, it's because of the weather, it was just, it was just the sound, you know, it just traveled more.
Bounced off the clouds, basically. And when those A three twenties really start spooling up, you you're right, it's like a rumble and it just goes, it's actually pretty amazing, but a bit bothersome, I suppose.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else, before we get into Citizens Forum, anything else? All right, so, uh, anybody that wants to make a comment or ask a question, can unmute themselves and state your name and address. If you're unable to do that, you can also put something in the chat and, uh, Tony can read it for you. All right, nothing in there, nothing in the chat? All right, then, um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion made.
Seconded.
Local vote.
Gene Canty, I.
Michael, I.
Josh Andrew, my, all right, thanks, everyone.